So now, I think we're ready to move on to the proposed zoning amendments, line clearing, and driveways. Actually, maybe we should start with the driveway proposed amendment because I see the Chief Sore is here and I don't want to hold you up any longer than necessary, Chief. So, um, what do we need to do? Yeah, I think that then we can let you go earlier rather than sitting through a lot of line clearance discussion.
There's information up here if you don't have it. There's a memo from Chief Sore and there's also the draft language.
I'd like to just start by saying that we received a memorandum from Chief Sore today. It's a 20-page memorandum. So, we're in, we just haven't had a chance to go through the memorandum.
Essentially, what this is, a lot of it, I won't bore you with it.
Well, may I just finish, Chief, if you don't mind? So, what we would like to do is, and then just finish my sentence, have a little extra time to go through this ourselves. And I appreciate your explanation. So, what I'm going to suggest is that rather than getting into detail on this driveway thing yet, we continue this hearing and give us a chance to go through this in some degree of thoroughness. Betsy, when could we continue the hearing to?
We would have to have a special meeting next week because we have a deadline at the beginning of March.
Okay, so, okay, so we can continue anytime.
Meeting on the 25th.
The 25th, okay, so we'll continue through the 25th. And that should give us enough time to process this material at least to some degree. Having interrupted you, please finish what you were about to say, Chief.
What I was going to say is the gist of what you got, a lot of this is basically, is the building code and it just references certain sections of the building code that we're looking for. This front page, or the front few pages basically sum it up. In July, in January of 2012, the Massachusetts, they adopted the International Building Code, which says that any fire access road needs to be 20 feet.
20 feet wide.
20 feet wide. We have not, we've had discussions, I know, about the 20-foot wide driveway. We're not asking to have a driveway be 20 feet wide. We said we would do minimum of 12. We would like to see 14 feet as a driveway. And the reason that we're doing this and that we're asking for this is because a lot of our trucks on a 10-foot driveway don't fit. Right now, I understand that we're in probably the third snowiest winter. We aren't getting into three-quarters of the driveways in this town right now because of the snow and a lot of them are because they're small driveways to begin with. If you're building 10,000-square-foot home, which is basically a commercial building, 600, 200 feet into the woods, you have to allow the fire department the ability to fight that fire as it was a commercial building, which means I have to get certain pieces of apparatus in there. On a 10-foot driveway, my ladder truck is going to take up the whole driveway. We have no place at the end for turnarounds. If trucks don't get put in certain places, ladders aren't going to reach. We're not going to be able to do the job that we are expected to do. Granted, we don't have as many fires as we used to have, but I'm even looking at this from a medical end on a 10-foot driveway. The engine a lot of times gets to bore the ambulance because they're EMTs. The engine can't get in the driveway. The guys are now hoofing it 100, 200 feet. They're wasting valuable time to get in there. Ambulances, we can't get an ambulance into a lot of driveways in this town now. If we have a fire with the apparatus, when we bring it, the width, it goes into the driveway. We have to drop a veto line from a hydrant. That's going to take up, you're going to pretty much 3 feet of your driveway. Tonight you're down to 7 feet. I'm not going to be able to get another truck. You can't drive over the hose once it's dropped unless you can drive straight over it. 10,000-foot commercial house, if you want to call it, it's going to take more than one 4-inch line to be laid for us to attack the fire and put the fire out. If that house is burning, the amount of water that we're going to need is going to exceed one. We're probably going to need two lines. So, we have to be prepared with that back, which is going to take up 6 feet of your driveway, which leaves us no space to get any other apparatus in there that we have to get in there. And I know years ago, you want to back the houses out, you want to keep them 20, 30 feet from the street. We can attack it from the street. We can reach the house from the street with our ladder truck. We can drag the hose, but right now, when you're putting them 100, 200 feet back, we can't. We cannot access it the way that we probably should. And I would like to propose that we work with the planning board, with Betsy, on an as-needed basis. We will sit down like we did today and go over any plan that comes into you. And we can make any kind of, you know, we can make some kind of revisions. We can ask for sprinklers if it's over 14,500, 700 square feet. We can ask for sprinklers under that. I can ask, but if the person does not want to put them in and they take us through the Sprinkle Board of Appeals, they don't have to put the sprinkler system in. We can ask that a fire hydrant be put in closer to the person's residence, but the cost of doing that becomes extremely expensive, which we can still ask that they have that done. But on a driveway of that width, we still need a bump out, is what we worked on today, because we have to pump the, we're going to have to pump that line layer fire hose 1,000 feet maximum to get the amount of pressure up to the truck that you need. So, we have to put a truck somewhere in the middle of that to pump it. And if we do that on 10-foot driveway, 12-foot driveway, 14-foot driveway, we've just blocked the entire driveway. So, we're more than willing to work with the planning board on a case-to-case basis. We're not saying that every driveway has to be 14 feet, 16 feet, 12 feet, but there are cases where 12 feet may be acceptable depending on the turns and how far. 14 feet we may want because of how far in we have to go, the size of the building, and things like that. And that's what we are proposing. And a lot of the stuff that's in here is just reference to the, to the building code, which gives a definition of the access road, what it means, driveway's been into it. Turnarounds in the driveways, we can't, we can't get apparatus turned around. We can't get our ambulance turned around on 144 Newton Street. I think that's the initial location. They just built the house, it's a 12-foot driveway. We said, "Okay, it wasn't that far down." And they put a plant there in the middle of it. We cannot, we have to do a 10-point turn to get the ambulance turned around, to get back out. By law, we can't back the ambulance out onto Newton Street because it's a right, it's a road. We can't back out onto it. And we don't have people available to stand and block the road so we can always get the ambulance out. In the interest of public safety, I would like to propose that the driveways, that we sit with the planning board and discuss each case individually.
Well, that's fine. Thank you, Chief. David, you got a comment?
Yeah, I have a question for you. Part of our interest is less, you know, impervious surface in a given area. So, that's where our interest is and stuff. Are you familiar with any, and do they work for these heavier vehicles? Any of these structured soils and structured loam stuff? Does that work?
Yeah, because we actually, we discussed that today, that we're open to pavers. They have to be H20 rated, because that'll hold the fire truck. And you could do off the side of the driveway grass. You can grow up through the pavers. As long as they keep it plowed, you can keep it open. We're open to, we'll work with you on anything. We're just looking for, we need enough access to get our apparatus in without either going through trees or trying, or going, you know, off, we're constantly going off the driveways and we don't really have the working space. I'm not looking to change anything that happened before, what happened before, with the war. We'll deal with it. But going forward, on a case-to-case basis, we'd like to be able to sit down with the planning board and discuss the width of the driveway.
That might be an option in an area where you would, you would need to be able to put your outriggers down and would need to be able to turn around. That would be an option.
Yeah, that is an option. That's something we've looked at and we've discussed that and I've discussed that with Betsy many times.
Well, rather than, I mean, without continuing the conversation much longer because I don't think we're really prepared without looking at this more thoroughly, I would just say that we're not married to the idea of the permit that's in the proposed bylaw amendment. What we were hoping to do is somehow arrive at predictable standards that people who are planning houses can rely on rather than trying to address each and every house on an empty case-by-case basis. That's, that's where we would like to be so that we're not, we don't wind up, in some cases, at loggerheads. And I'll just give a couple of examples. I know that in one case, fairly long driveway may have to be expanded to accommodate the standard. Went through site plan review, planning board signed off on it. It's going to require a materials removal permit, special permit from the planning board to increase the driveway by 2 to 4 feet will generate a considerable addition to the quantity of material removed and some disruption to the natural landscape features. And my guess is the planning board probably, I don't want to speak for the board, but we, I think we'd have a difficult time granting that permit. So, I don't want to get us into a situation where there's a loggerhead condition and people could do predictable standards that we can all live by. You know, given the certain set of circumstances, this is what you as the designer, or homeowner, or builder could reasonably believe would be the requirements from the planning board and the fire department. That would be what we would, we would like to see. It would help us, it would help you, it would help the people who are submitting to us and submitting for a building permit. And so, that's kind of where we are. No problem meeting and discussing these issues and working out the details, but if we could get to standards, that would be great, at least from our perspective. Yes, sir?
All of that already exists. I just got a building from December 1st. Captain Robertson made me change my driveway based on radiuses that he needed in widths of the driveway. So, the information we can just ask for. I just pulled the permit and I made changes and Captain Robertson signed the permit off as part of the permit process.
Well, that'd be great to do, but we have radiuses. All that exists.
But we'd like to, before each one of them goes, before the planning board approves it, if the fire department had the opportunity to sit down and look at it and say, you know what? This is 200 feet in the curves that you have in this driveway. We're not going to be able to get our truck in here. Can we modify this before, before we give anybody a permit to do anything? Then there's no, there's no arguing over it at the end. I can't put, I don't want to put a standard on the size of the driveway, but we have to see it first because you could say if it's 100 feet back, it has to be 14 feet. But that's great, but if there's 35-inch curves that are in that 14 feet and trees, well, the 14 feet's not going to work for us.
Well, I don't, I don't know what standards you were talking, you were giving, but the planning board would like to see, as David said, the least width that's reasonable as opposed to a standard that we've been getting for driveways of almost any length of 14 feet. 14 feet is a, is a very wide driveway and not, and by the way, it's wider than the street I live on. And so, but, well, that may be appropriate in certain circumstances. It's not necessarily appropriate in every circumstance. And we want to get some kind of a notion of what we can do to accommodate what we were elected to do and what you would like, you need for safety standards. That's where we are.
Well, we put in there that we have, we have sat with the building department and we have come up with a minimum of a 12-foot driveway. We would like to see 14 and it's going to depend upon the length. And I know you don't want to see a 12, and I understand that it's not the size of the road, but there are some roads in this town that we can't set our apparatus up.
Some roads are 9 feet wide in this town.
I understand. And we block the road, but we can also get to the other side if I need to bring another piece of apparatus and we can bring in a different length. A driveway, once we're in, we're in. If we don't put apparatus in the proper position, the job that we're going to do isn't going to go the way it's supposed to. And we have five minutes to figure that out.
We're going to get loggerheads on the standard of 14 feet.
You're talking about public safety and people's lives that are.
We're not ready to talk about this this week, but I will say this, if it's, if it's, no, I won't say it. We're all right.
Well, can I just add a comment to that?
Yeah.
David and I met with a developer who is working out a planning, a planning board project. And despite the fact the driveway's really long, we reached a conclusion or we reached a recommendation of what could be done. And the driveway was still going to be 12 feet wide.
Yeah, we did a bump out and we did it with the pavers, if they could do it with the, with that type of paper. Because they can't make the driveway anymore, but they have a 10,000-square-foot house with an elevation. I've got to put a pump somewhere in that driveway.
That was one of the, see, this is one of the things that we, this is why we need to talk about this a little bit more because one of the things that we've been given is the 14 feet for the entire length of the driveway. That may not be necessary for the entire length of the driveway. There may, you know, there may be ways to deal with it that we need to.
But that's why we said that we would like, if the fire department had, if we could see the plans before they were approved by the planning board, we'll sit with Betsy once a month and go over the plans and look at them and just say, "Okay, this one we can, we can accommodate a bump out here. Give us a good spot. That's where we're going to need to put a truck. We can do it." This particular building, we might want more, need more at the end so that we can make sure that we get the proper trucks in the proper position to do a bigger turnaround at the end of the driveway. We may tell you that 12 feet is great. Give us a bump here and we'll be able to work with it because it's not that long. But in order for us to do that without hurting any of the people that are building it, we need to see the plan before it gets approved.
Okay, well, go ahead.
I think, you know, I think that's a good idea in the interim because we're not ready to, you know, really figure out what, what kind of standard we may or may not want to try to add or if it passed. But the idea of sitting down on a case-by-case basis over the next several months with Betsy and seeing where, you know, how those, how that works, you know, and it may be that we need to, you know, do something different, but let's try that.
Yeah, that's what we, probably we try with us in the building department.
I mean, Jonathan Buckman, 71 Sullivan Lane.
I think it's a pretty, I've been through you guys many times. I think it's pretty simple. Anything that goes to planning board, you guys get a say and then the fire department gets the final say with you on that project. Every other driveway can be proposed to the fire department like we do for sprinkler and fire alarm and everything else we do. Let them review it with the builder developer and let them make recommendations and we'll do what they want. And it'll be pretty simple, but I don't think we have to go through you for every single driveway that we want to put in in this town. That's not what the planning board's for.
As I said earlier, the important thing for us is to know, we're going to be reviewing this, these proposals on a regular basis.
You want to review every driveway that goes through this town?
No, well, we do anyway for site plan review. We don't want to.
But we don't go through you for every plan. I come through you.
Did you listen to what I said, Jonathan?
I can hear you.
Okay, I said we're not married to the, to the permit deal or what we're, what we'd like to have is set of standards. That's all.
That's fine. Give the fire department the final review and let them make the decision.
I don't know if we're, if we're willing to say the fire department can overrule the planning board's.
But we're not going to go through you on every driveway.
We don't care about the driveways that are not under some planning board review.
But they should be, they should be still reviewed by the fire department.
Yes, absolutely. We're only talking about driveways that come under site plan review. That's all.
But say, every, thank, this is for 10-foot everywhere.
Yeah, it's, that was just to start the dialogue.
Right, but that's 10-foot everywhere.
That's what it's saying.
Keep by Samy in 148 Country Drive.
Yeah, it could be 12 feet everywhere. I mean, it's, it was just a number to start the dialogue. Don't get excited about the number. Don't even get excited about the permit. The issue is raising the discussion so that we're having a public discussion on an issue that has come up again and again and again with respect to the, what the, the standards that the planning board's applied for the last 20 years and a change in those standards that has fairly significant, could have fairly significant impacts on projects that we've already reviewed and signed off on. We're trying to get to a point where we don't repeat that for, for projects that come before the planning board with site plan review. And this was the only way we could see to get the process out in the public dialogue. Yes?
Diana Chaplin, 26 Love Lane. Two things, I mean, I think in the past 20 years, we've had a change in 2012. I guess there was a change in the standard for the building code, which might make this sort of review necessary. But I do, I strongly believe that the fire department should have the final say over the planning board for the safety of driveways. Because these houses are big and if they start burning, we need help. We haven't even seen one of these fires yet. I mean, in Little Antiques, it's easy because they're all right there and they, you know how they burn.
Right. And it could be that, that our standards are not appropriate for the best interest of public safety or property. But what we would like to have personally, standards that we could rely on so that what we're doing is giving people reasonable advice during site plan review. I don't see why that's so crazy. Yes, did you?
Yeah. What is the existing, what is the existing standard for planning board driveway widths? Isn't it a 12 feet?
12 feet. Yes?
I, because of dispute with a neighbor over a proposed 16-foot driveway, I have had a number of consultant consultations with the State Department of Transportation and spoke with Mr. Peter Davis at the federal government. And anything over 12 feet is considered to be a single-lane road or highway. It is not a driveway.
That's why I want to look at this further because the code references in here actually refer to this fire access roadways. And the question is whether a single-family residence driveway qualifies as a fire access roadway. That's one of the questions I, I want to do research on.
Chief, would you say that it does?
It's in, it's in there.
A driveway for an individual.
For fire access, that's what it says. It says for fire, for fire access means any structure that the fire department needs to get at.
So, a driveway on private property would be considered. Because it also says that you can't have any parking or any of the obstructions on a fire access roadway.
It also shows a diagram showing the fire access roadway all the way around the building. I just, I just.
Oh, no, there are a lot of things that we could ask for that we don't. Because there's commercial, because it's a commercial, I mean, you're building a commercial structure. We could ask to have that to go all the way around. If there's a fire on 10,000, one ladder truck isn't going to work. We're going to need multiple points of access. So, that's why we're willing to work with you and not push the 20-foot.
So, do we want to require, I mean, should there be a bylaw since you have the sprinkler of building over so many square feet or something?
It's state law.
The state law is 14,000, that's pretty big.
But I think they're changing that to.
Well, they're trying with this opposition. So, you can't, you can't guarantee that that's going to happen.
Right.
It would be great, we require, we ask that anything over that, that people sprinkle. Some people do, some don't.
Over what, over what?
I'd like to see anything over, we're looking between 8, 6, 8,000 square feet. The way, the way we run with fire, the number of personnel that we run and how big of a structure that is to try to hit the hose line, drive through a building like that.
That's good information for us to know. We need, as we're working.
We do require it, but very, very, it's expensive and very rarely do we win. I mean, people basically come in and tell us, it's 14, if it's 14.5, they're coming in at 14.3, 14.2 because they do not want, they don't want to sprinkle a home. And I, I understand, but we just, we can only push so hard and they're going to go to the Sprinkle Board of Appeals and we're going to lose that case.
Let me ask you this question, Chief. The primary goal for the fire department is saving the life.
Protection of life and property.
Life first, property second. I mean, that's, so, you know, that, I think we have to bear that in mind that we're, that, that what we're, what we should really focus on is your ability to access the house and get the people out of there, number one. And number two, if you can't reach the farthest corner of the house, but you've got all the people out, maybe that's a secondary goal, you know.
Yeah, I'm not going to, I'm not going to get into that question right now as far as that. Our job is the protection of life and property. We have to do certain things in order to save people's lives if that's, if that's what we have to do. We have to get the apparatus into certain, we may need a ladder truck to do it.
People were laughing, Chief, but.
We still need water.
But let me tell you, if you've got a 14,000 or in some cases 15,000-square-foot house, that's as large as a small office building. And in a small office building, you're looking for fire access all the way around that structure to be able to protect the structure. And that's not, that's not, you know, an outlandish request if the, if the objective is to preserve property. I'm just saying.
Well, if you have someone in the rear of the building in a window and we don't have access to the rear of the window, the rear of the building with the ladder truck and we need it, then are we talking about life or do we have our property at that point?
This is, this is why I'm looking for some level of comprehension of, some standards that we can go by when we're reviewing site plans on sloping sites for houses that are, you know, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14,000 square feet. What, where is the level of protection, the real level of protection? It's not just driveways, not just driveway widths. It's also where, you know, where the apparatus needs to set up, what your dimensional requirements are. We need to know those things in order for us to make reasonable decisions when we're going through site plan review. That's all.
I would be more than happy to come to a planning board meeting. And if you had two hours to explain how our operation differs depending on where we are and what we do and why we have to have certain amount of footage and why certain pieces of apparatus have to go in the positions they're in, I'd be more than happy to come and answer any of those questions.
Well, I think it's going to be more than just a discussion. I would, you know, we have consultants that would be glad to work with you and develop some guidelines for us to follow so that we're not just totally in the dark and, and that we can reach some kind of an accommodation with respect to what the, what the requirements are and what, and what kind of mitigation measures might work, like for example, you know, 12-foot wide driveways with strategic areas where you can set up or pull, or pull out, that sort of thing. So that we know the kinds of requirements that we need to impose so that people aren't surprised when they come to you. And it's not, maybe it's talking to the planner and our consultants offline. Or maybe it's, but if, if we on the planning board understood, had a better understanding, then we, maybe we could steer people in the right direction sooner. Yes? Yes?
Thank you. So, the question that I have is, what happens if the planning board insists on removing part of the driveway, for example, the circular driveway, removing it against the, let's say, safety of turning around or whatever? And what happens if somebody actually dies in the fire in that house? Will planning board be responsible? Can the planning board be responsible if they are on the record when the owner is asking to have that private wider and longer and turn around and the planning board refuses that? I'm just curious how that works.
It's a rhetorical question, right?
It's not rhetorical.
Oh, I have no idea what the answer is.
Well, not legally, I'm asking.
I don't know, I'm not a lawyer.
So, it's not a rhetorical question. It's a question to ponder and ask a lawyer. What happens if, will the town be responsible or planning board, who will be responsible in this case? It's, it's just questions or I would like to have an answer.
Open-ended question because there's so many factors involved.
Well, I think, I don't want to cut you off, but I think if we can come up with an agreement that we, we just meet on the driveways, we would end 99% of this, the conversations and the thought, whatever's going on right, and we could just do it before, before it gets to the, to the builder. We could say that we were, we are requiring. We could say that we were, we are requiring, we'll sit down with Betsy, and say that we would like to see fourteen feet, and this is the reasoning why. The planning board gets it, then it goes off to the builder, and then everybody's all set, instead of it going from the planning board to the fire department, and then us going, well, we'd like to see fourteen feet, and then, you know, having, having to change what you've already done. If we're willing to sit down with Betsy before, and wait, once a month, someone from our, myself or my captain will sit down with her and go over the, you know, the plans that are coming in, I think most of this could be taken care of within a couple of hours, like we did today. We took care of four of them, five of them today, and all within a few hours. And I don't think we made any huge changes. We made some concessions, we gave, we said we let the bump out on one of them, we said we could use the pavers on other ones. It's just trying to work to make sure, I understand what your job is, I understand what you're trying to do, I understand from a building point of view that they don't wanna have something said to them to start it, and have us be the bad guy and say, hey, look, we can't, do anything with us. And at the end of the day, I have to sign off on what that building is, and I'm putting my name, saying that the fire department has okayed this, and if we can't get in and do our job, then I'm not gonna be signing off on it.
I'd, I'd still like to continue the hearing, in any case, in case there's more discussion on this, and then if there's not, if, you know, if we've come to a resolution, we can, we can just bypass it, but when would we get that?
The twenty-fifth, which is the next week. No, no, no.
That's right, you said the twenty-fifth.
Of February, so next week.
We have to see if we're all available.
This is, this will be in the meeting.
Right.
Next, yeah. Everybody?
I don't know.
Maybe you'll be, I would like to see that.
You don't know?
I just, I lost some money. Yeah.
Okay. We're on, how about you? Seven thirty? So we need it on four?
Fire.
We need it on four?
Uh, no.
Okay. So we're, we're, we're just. Okay, so we'll, we'll continue to seven thirty on the twenty-fifth.
I have a question. On the process, if, on the continued hearing, so say this discussion continues, and there's still no agreement on, on it should be ten feet or twelve feet, is that still pushed to town meeting?
It's not, it's not about whether it's ten feet or twelve feet, it's about whether it's twelve feet or sixteen feet, or, you know, that's for fourteen feet, or, you know, what are the standards that define it? It's the minimum, frankly, we've, the research that we've shown indicates that in a number of communities in Massachusetts, the minimum width is ten feet, but we, our standard has always been around eleven feet. If the, if the minimum is twelve feet, you know, the, the, the reason for setting a minimum of ten feet is that there are some houses, believe it or not, in Weston, that are not four thousand or six thousand or twelve thousand feet. Some of them are actually, I realize they're barely livable, but they're only like three thousand or twenty-five hundred square feet. The question would be whether you need a twelve or a fourteen.
It wasn't my question, my question was on the process. After the continued hearing, say this debate continues like it just was, where there's no decision, does it still go to town meeting?
Oh, we'll make the decision.
Is it your decision, though?
We'll decide whether to bring it forward to town meeting.
Based on even if there's some objection from the public?
Maybe?
Yes, that's a draw.
It would be voted in a public meeting, that's all.
I'm just saying, nothing that comes to town meeting doesn't have some opposition.
Exactly. I can't remember the last time the planning board submitted anything at town meeting, but you now.
The planning board, anything.
Well, that's true.
Last question, you keep saying minimum, but the language in this, it says standard with ten feet.
Yeah, it says maximum, success.
So, so, are you gonna change the language to minimum?
Yeah.
Is this supposed to say minimum?
Yeah. It should say minimum.
Oh.
Do you have something else you wanted to say?
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, is there a problem with requiring buildings over a certain size to have a sprinkler system?
Just talk about that.
State law.
There's some kind of a state law that says you can't, you can't require it if the building's under fourteen thousand square feet.
She's saying, why can't we?
That was David's question.
And then it says here, new construction, not subject to site plan review, is that fortyB housing?
Yes, or housing under the trigger.
A and R, every house.
So if you, if you have a, say, a forty thousand square foot lot, and you have a three thousand nine hundred ninety-nine, three thousand nine hundred ninety-five square foot host house, it doesn't have site plan review, so you'd be off the hook. And you'd all be required to go to the, to the fire department, because their standards. Anybody else? All right.
Can I just ask you a question? I was wondering, I was wondering if there was, part of the issue was maximum driveway size, that I, it wasn't something?
The intent there was, no, that's minimal, but the intent there was to try to establish some standards for relating lot size, built.
Right, no, I get it, but wasn't the objective to limit, to limit the width? Is it these outside driveways that are wider than streets?
That wouldn't be the purpose of the standards.
Okay, but there's nothing about maximum.
No, there's nothing about maximum.
All right.
Okay. Good, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
We'll see you next week.